Going to call the July 6th Regular Council Meeting to Order. Please stand and join me in a Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Truka.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Vote.
Here.
All set.
Here.
Before you are minutes from the June 15th, 2021 Regular Meeting. Did everybody have a chance to review them and do you have any questions? Vicky, do you have any questions? Before we vote to accept them, maybe we should let you take the podium.
Vicky DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. The only question that I have, and it pertains to both the June 1st, 2021 Council Meeting Minutes and the June 3rd, 2021 Council Minutes, is at the top of each page, it says Thursday, June 24th, 2021.
You're talking about not the June 15th Minutes.
No. I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, yes, I was talking about the, yeah, yeah, I don't, well, I don't have any questions about the June 15th, other than, I guess, you know, it talks about all set made a motion to accept the minutes. I have a question about those two minutes.
That we accepted.
Yeah, June 1st and June 3rd that were accepted at the June 15th.
Can we correct them after we've accepted them here? Do we have to go over them?
And I just didn't know, like I say, each page at the very top, it says June 24th, 2021.
June 24th.
Yeah, these are the minutes that I printed off, Documents on Demand.
Should not be any June 24 minutes to be approved yet because I don't think we're done with them.
I know. What I'm saying is if you look at the minutes of June 1st and June 3rd that appear in the Documents on Demand, at the top of each page of those minutes, in the top right-hand corner, it is typed, "Thursday, June 24th, 2021."
On the top right or the center top?
The top right. I printed these off from Documents on Demand.
Could you pass them down here?
Mm-hmm. Because I have noticed that the minutes that are put in the packet for Council to look at are not formatted the same as what appears on Documents on Demand. So the minutes that were in the packet for June 1st and June 3rd did not have, what'd I say, June 24th up in the right-hand corner. But if you go to Documents on Demand...
That's the date that they put on it.
What?
Printed up there.
Typically, the date that you have up there is the date of the meeting itself. I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
Well, I'm wondering, she just told me that this was the date that the minutes were uploaded onto the website, this Thursday, June 24th. Because when you type the minutes, this is never on there, right?
It's in the date that it's last edited is put onto the header.
I'm just wondering if that may cause some confusion if someone's looking at the minutes and the minutes are talking about June 1st, but then we're looking up here in the right-hand corner and it says, I'm just, I'm just asking the question. I'm pointing it out.
Can we upload it and edit it better? Could we just add a line of "uploaded on"? A file maybe?
Or we could remove it. I don't ever remember it being on there before, a date being on the top right.
When we had other Council clerks, yes.
They were?
But it was just, I believe, on the first page. And it was the date of the actual meeting itself.
We'll check into this.
Okay. May I have those back?
But the June 15th are good.
Yes, I have no problem with the minutes. I do have a comment on the new and miscellaneous business, but I can do that later under public participation if you wish.
Okay, we'll wait till later.
Okay.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the, or approve the June 15th Minutes.
Move.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Granting permission for visitors to speak, we have Erin Spocky of Equitable Advisors that had requested to address Council. If you could go up there and state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Erin Spocky. I live at 1018 Park Road in Crestline, Ohio. Thank you all for allowing me the time to speak today. As you mentioned, my name is Erin Spocky with Equitable Advisors, a company that's been around since the 1850s and the number one provider of optional deferred comp in the school districts in the entire U.S., including the city of Bucyrus. The reason for my visit today is just to introduce myself as an additional financial resource for the employees of Bucyrus, as a local Crawford resident and a resource for a lot of local other municipalities. My goal, like I said, being that additional resource is just to provide information to the employees about their current retirement and other personal and financial goals. And I'm looking forward to that opportunity next Tuesday from 11:00 to 1:00. I'll be here at City Hall and an open house question and answer forum for any employees that would like to come and visit that had any questions. Thank you again for your time. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions. Does any of you have any questions?
Thank you all very much for your time.
Okay, any other visitors want to address Council? Please go to the podium.
I'll need to get the rest of my stuff. Vicky DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. I just checked the Documents on Demand and the prior Council Minutes that were prepared with previous Council clerks. At the top right-hand corner, it had the date of the meeting itself, and that was on each page, not just Page 1, but each page. Like if it was the June 1st Council Meeting Minutes, at the top right-hand corner on each page, it had June 1st. So just to clarify that statement. Under the new and miscellaneous business, on Page 3 of the June 15th Council Meeting Minutes, I'm just gonna recite some sentences or, yeah, some sentences that appear under that. It says, "Finkhauser discussed removing committee minutes from the Council meetings." Finkhauser is saying the committee minutes should only be discussed during the individual committee meetings. Finkhauser stated the minutes should be finalized and approved prior to being in the Council Minutes or in the permanent records. Ratliff noted, "It does make it difficult to find specific committee meeting minutes when they're added into the regular Council meeting packets." Now, while it's not stated in the Council Meeting Minutes, it is confirmed by the audio recording that Ratliff also stated that we could have all Council Minutes in one place, all finance meeting minutes in one place, all public lands and buildings minutes in one place, and you could cross-reference their adoption in the Council Meeting Minutes. But by having these separate places for each committee meeting minutes, it makes it easier to find those minutes and more transparent. I remind both Council, or maybe it's informing both Council and the Law Director, that this very procedure of having separate folders for each individual committee minutes, like you would have a folder for finance for the year 2021, you would have a folder for public lands and buildings for 2021, that very procedure, Regina Zorn's, she did that. I don't know if that practice continued with the two subsequent, you know, Council clerks, Hill and...
I do not believe that that practice was being continued with the two...
But I mean, you know, Regina was here 25-plus years and that's the practice that, you know, she used. I also just want to remind Council that in 1996, when the Law Director's office was moved to City Hall, each year, I prepared a box for downstairs in our office. 1996, I would have a box or a file for individual finance minutes, a file folder individually for public lands and buildings. I did that. I also had boxes, and I did it for each year, from 1996 all the way up to my retirement of 2016. I had the ordinances, the resolutions, the draft legislation that I prepared and then was marked off and approved by the Law Directors. I'm hoping, because in my opinion, those boxes contained invaluable reference material. I'm hoping those boxes are still down there. Are they, Rob?
I'll have to check. We put a whole bunch of stuff back in the storage in the backpack. I'll have to check.
Have any boxes been removed and destroyed?
Oh, yes.
Continuing on, I have no problem with the committee meeting minutes discussed only during the committee meetings and having those meeting minutes placed in the Council Minutes and permanent records after they've been finalized and approved. However, I do have one concern. I've had this concern and I continue to have it. And I guess it's a question I'll ask of the Law Director. If we follow this procedure, that is, we don't discuss the Council Meeting Minutes or the committee meeting minutes at a Council meeting, and they're not placed in the Council Meeting Minutes until they are finalized and approved, in the interim, are you, is your office still able to prepare the legislation that's been requested by the individual committees and presented to Council for their consideration before these minutes have been finalized and approved?
There are several layers of issues there. If you are preparing, the minutes need to be approved by the committee that creates the minutes. You can have draft minutes, you can have the tapes, you can have the legislation request, you can have all those things to prepare the legislation, but the official minutes are going to be generated by that committee and it's going to be generated by that committee when that committee next meets and approves those minutes. I don't see any reason why it can't be done that way and get everything done.
So if a piece of legislation is prepared and passed by Council prior to the committee having finalized and approved their minutes, which directly requested the preparation of the legislation, if at the time, when the time comes, that those committee minutes are finalized and approved and it's found, oh goodness, that's not what we wanted for the legislation, that's not what was said, the actual recording says this, the minutes were done wrong and the request that we did, then...
I would hope that the committee and the Council would review the legislation to make sure that it comports with both their legislation request and with their intent coming out of committee or out of Council before they pass it.
Well, I think that's why we had that one section that we asked, is the Finance Committee favorable to this piece of legislation? And then Mark gives his okay, yes, finances.
And I guess, and you know, I don't want to be argumentative. My only comment to that would be, you mentioned you would hope that Council, you know, would review the legislation, make sure that it comports or matches up with what they're asking. I mean, look at the issues with the meeting minutes. Is Council looking at their meeting minutes that are prepared before they're passed?
Well, that's on them to do that. They can review their minutes, they can review the legislation, and that's, that's the way the process works.
I guess the trail that we're seeing is that's not quite happening, and is that going to continue on with, you know, your comment that you would hope that, you know, that they would look at the legislation and read it and...
There's not an answer to that question.
Okay.
They're elected officials, they act as they see fit.
Okay, while I'm up here, Documents on Demand. Tonight, I got the traditional email that I get because I'm signed up every time there's something put on the Documents on Demand, I get an email that says, hey, this has been put on it. I got an email today that said the City Council Agenda Packet for May 4th, 2021 was put on Documents on Demand today.
That was a typo then, it should've said today's date.
Yeah. So, and because that comes up under Documents on Demand, you know, if an individual citizen was checking the Documents on Demand, they're not going to find tonight's agenda because it's listed as May 4th.
I will correct that typo on there. Thanks for pointing it out.
And then another thing, I noticed the June 15th, 2021 Council Audio Recording, that that's not listed on the Documents on Demand yet, when I was going through that today.
I thought I had put everything up there late last week.
I didn't see it today.
I'll check on that.
Um, on the minutes, what's happening with our May 18th Minutes for Council? You know, those were minutes that were approved at the 6-1-21 Regular Council Meeting. Changes were outlined at the 6-3-21 Joint Regular Committee Meeting, but we still have no amended minutes prepared and approved.
The May 18th?
May 18th.
I knew there was a meeting that I felt like we never approved the minutes for, and apparently you figured it out.
There's also no minutes prepared for the May 4th Council Meeting.
Is there more?
Yes. April 20th, '21. Now, there were minutes prepared, but before they were considered for approval, you had me come up during that meeting, and that was on May the 4th, and they were held up for approval pending the changes that I had outlined to be made to them. On May 10th, Kurt, you gave me a phone call asking if I would go ahead and amend those minutes to save you some time, which I agreed to do. You emailed them to me. I amended those minutes with the corrections that I had asked for.
On the May 18th ones?
Yeah, no, this is April 20th. I also told you in an email that I cleaned up the minutes so far as typo errors, grammar errors, what have you. At the June 3rd Joint Regular Committee Meeting, I questioned when these minutes would be approved, and to date, there's been no fully amended minutes prepared and approved.
For April 20th?
For April 20th. Now, that's for the regular Council Meetings.
And there's committee ones too that are not...
Well, I won't discuss committee because I'll be discussing those at the committee meetings per...
Right.
So you have special Council Meetings. We have no minutes for June 25th. We have no minutes for June 24th. There are no minutes for June 22nd. And there are no minutes for May the 6th.
Well, this is what happens when a Council operates for almost three months without a clerk. And the Ohio Vice Code, at the beginning of a new Council term, requests that within 10 days, a clerk be appointed, so we went well beyond that trying to find a replacement. But we, I'm glad you pointed these out, Vicky, so that we can try to get cleared up over the last three months.
And then the last thing is, I want to correct a statement that I made at the June 24th, '21 Special Council Meeting. And that was while we were discussing Ordinance Number 16-21, repealing and replacing Ordinance Number 12-2020, the Table of Human Resource Staffing Organization for the city of Bucyrus. I stated at that time that Ordinance Number 12-2020 was the last billet prepared. I have since discovered that Ordinance Number 42-2020, which amended Ordinance Number 12-2020, was the last billet prepared. So I just wanted to correct my statement that I had made in air. That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Vicky, I've got a quick question for you. I know you said you don't want to discuss the committee minutes, but would you mind just giving the dates of what's missing? That way, like, I know for me, for health and safety, if there's some, I know I prepared them all, but I don't think we approved them all. That way, I can have them ready for Thursday.
All right, these are the regular, do you want them just for your committee or are you wanting them for all?
I can't speak for everybody, but I'd like them for health and safety at least.
Okay, for the regular committee meetings, well, the June 3rd, there have been minutes prepared, and those you'll be talking about this Thursday. The May, oh, let's see, the May 20th, '21, let's see, there were minutes for public lands and buildings, health and safety. On June 3rd, I started to report out on changes to the health and safety meeting minutes that were prepared by Councilperson Sherrick, but was told by Council, or was told by Chairperson Myers, that he had prepared his own May 20th, '21 Committee Meeting Minutes. He would get all minutes updated and forward to me. I haven't got those. And you had minutes that needed to be updated for April 27th, '21, May 6th, '20, '21, and May 20, '21. Well, let's see, on the May 20th, though, I did report out on changes to the public lands and buildings, so they need to amend their minutes. Health and safety, until I get your minutes, I don't know what changes I may have. Finance Committee, I reported out on changes on June 3rd, so they'll need to be amending their 520 minutes. Service Committee also need to amend their 520 meeting minutes. And then I also had reported out changes to be made to the 520, '21 Public Participation, Page 1 part of the minutes. Let's see, 5621 meeting, health and safety, I already told you that. Finance Committee, on June 3rd, I reported out changes to their 56 minutes, so you have amendments to make on that. Public lands and buildings, same thing, have an amendment to make on their 56. April 22nd, 2021, Finance has a change to make on those minutes, which I reported out at the 54 meeting, then again, reported out at the 6/3 meeting. That's regular committee meetings. Special Committee Meetings, June 24th, Finance, I have seen no minutes prepared as of yet. 524, Finance, no minutes prepared as of yet, or I haven't seen them. 510, I reported out on changes, this is Finance again, to their 6/3 meeting minutes. And I already said the 427 for health and safety. Well, there were two 427. You goofed the one up and it was supposed to be May 6th, so anyhow, there's another 427, 2021, health and safety. And then Finance, April 20th, you also had, I reported out on changes to that, still waiting for that to be amended and approved. So you got those all written down there? I believe if I, because I wasn't really prepared to read all that, so hopefully I read it all correctly.
We may need some help in the office getting all those.
Grandkids, thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
Yes, Bruce?
So you're saying when we have a committee meeting and say we had it two weeks ago, we're not, we're not to read the minutes at all at this Council Meeting?
No, because they're not approved yet by that, the next time that committee has met.
The thing is, is how, how does, how does the people out there know what we're even doing? I mean, it's almost like kind of flying in the dark. I mean, you're not letting anybody know, even though they're not approved.
It's the same way the Traffic Commission does it, Bruce.
I don't really care about the Traffic Commission. I've been on Council a long time and a lot of people are informed, and now all of a sudden, we're not going to allow them to be informed now.
If they want to know what happened in that committee meeting, they can watch that committee meeting. We're not going to double duplicate it by bringing it into the regular Council Meeting. Both meetings are broadcast the same way.
So you're telling me as a Council President, you're allowed to make that decision without everyone else voting on it?
Am I, Rob?
You have provision in the, in the, your agenda for a report of your committee. Your report can be whatever you want it to be.
So in other words, I'm allowed to bring it up if I so desire it?
If you want to read your draft minutes, you can do so.
I just think you're...
But they're, they're draft minutes, so you may be injecting air into it, but I don't, giving a report of what your committee's business is.
Man, why even broadcast Council Meetings is what I'm getting at? Even though, but I don't know. I just...
At one point, Bruce, the Access Channel did not broadcast committee meetings. It only broadcast Council Meetings. I would see an argument at that point on why you need to go over all these committee minutes so that it was at least broadcast once on the Access Channel. Now that we have access covering all this stuff, it's no longer needed. Does that make sense?
Unless a meeting's not covered, which we just had a meeting that wasn't covered by Access.
Last Friday?
We've had several meetings that haven't been covered.
Well, I'd like to see Access cover... Well, I'd like to see access, uh, cover all the meetings, I really would. I am not the supervisor for the access employees, so if you want, guys want to make that change, you can change it in the bill. Is there any other public participation?
Chuck Stone, fifteen oh-three, Linnwood Drive. I don't think you answered Bruce's question. That, do you have that authority to say whether, uh, minutes can, can be read or not?
And I referred to our leader.
And, and the only, and then I was thinking about her. She comes up with some, where they've got to have money right now. And if you do that, it's going to be three, four, or five weeks out. Am I right or wrong on that? So, but doing that, what you're saying is that if she has an emergency comes up, or if we have another parade, uh, car show comes up, want to have it in two weeks, really, there can't be approval for some of this stuff in that timeframe.
I'll ask Joyce, Joyce, do you want us to read all over the committee draft minutes at every regular council meeting?
If, if, if I may. I, I don't think you should, you're focused on the term minutes. And minutes have a definition. They're prepared for a committee, they're ultimately approved for the committee or by the committee, and they're part of the permanent record, if you will. You have a provision in your agenda, and you do this every meeting, for reports from the committee. Now, at that time, the committee can give a report on all the work that's done ad nauseam, no reference to when, or no, no limitations on when or how long. If you've been working on a project for three months, you can talk about that project for three months. You have that provision in here. What we have done in recent years, well, since I've been here, is we, is we take a take an approach of reading minutes as if they are sacrosanct at that point, but they have not been approved by, by the committee. If you want to read those draft minutes in lieu of giving a detailed report, you, you're more than welcome to do so. There's a provision here to do it. But you, you need to be aware, you need to be clear, that those are not official minutes, that you're reading at that point in time. That is merely a report of the committee. And if you take the path that, well, these draft minutes are prepared, it's easy, I'm going to read these, that's fine. If you want to go and make a detailed statement so that the public knows exactly what you've been working on for not only the last week, but the weeks before that, and the decision process on a multi-month project, you have that ability in there as well. That's what that's for, that's to give those reports, and you can make it as lengthy and as de, as detailed as you want it, or you can simply defer to, um, draft minutes and, and read draft minutes. But, but the, the language is, you know, is kind of what we're getting hung up on here. They're, they're just not minutes at that point in time, because they've not been adopted by the committee, so.
And, and my concern is if you, you read them, and there's an error in them, now they have to be permanent record in that regular meeting that we're having. So you just made a permanent record out of something that was an error.
So what's the difference in that and bringing stuff up in these meetings that's not already proof of fact when we start talking about things? And I bring that up because, no offense, Mr. McKeever, but what you brought up at our last meeting about the water line in the county, it was awful funny, because the following day, I heard Derek Doble ask Mr. Weisenhower that exact question, and he said, I didn't know. So he didn't know what he was talking about that night, and it made it in public record, no offense. So what's the difference in that?
Whatever your report is, it's going to be part of the, the public record for this meeting. It's going to be part of the minutes for, for this meeting, and a, and a synopsis of what your report is, is going to be part of the record of this meeting.
And another issue is if you, if you read the draft minutes, and they're in the permanent record, and then they're on the website, somebody could find the draft minutes and think, oh, these are the minutes from that committee meeting, they're, they don't know any better.
Shouldn't they be labeled?
They don't draft before.
Shouldn't they be labeled the way they are? Oh, so they can, they, they only can read what they want to hear?
I myself have mistaken the draft watermark and thought that it was.
Okay. Now, what about the minutes that are past, are we supposed to somehow incorporate those? So like, when we do this, and we get to our different ma, meeting minutes, would we read the past minutes, or ask to have those encompassed, and then give a, a small synopsis of what we did after, and what we.
Well, here's, here's one thing we could do, here's one thing you could do. The committee approves its minutes, and they are finalized. And then, if you want those minutes to be on paper in the fireproof safe, which is not required by Ohio Vice Code, they could be kept in electronic form. But if you want them to be in a fireproof safe, we could then put it on the agenda, accept and file minutes from this date, and then it would be included in when it's put in the fireproof safe. But, but you don't read them. It's just kind of like tonight, we did not read over the June fifteenth, we didn't read those. You had a chance to review them, and you accepted and filed them. Approved them. You could do it that same way.
So you're telling me that the minutes that, that the committee approves this Thursday will never be brought up again at the next council meeting?
They're not legally required to be.
So then, how's everybody going to know what the hell's going on? Excuse me.
Well, the same way they know what's going on in this meeting right here, they're probably watching it on Facebook. They probably could watch the same committee meeting on Facebook.
Mr. President.
Joyce.
Why, since you have a place for giving a report for each committee, there's no reason why the committee chair can't give a condensed version, okay?
I would like to see like a one or two-sentence condensed version, is what I would like to see.
You know, finance could say.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't know why they're not doing that. I don't know why they're reading draft minutes that aren't approved. We had this come up last year when we redid the council rules of procedure, and never really came to a solution.
Because I, I truly believe you don't have to, to say verbatim everything that was mentioned in a committee meeting, or who, who made the motion and who seconded it.
You know, like, like service committee, if they're working on a water line somewhere, they could just say a brief one sentence, hey, we're working on a water line on Stetson Road, that's all they need to say. If somebody wants to know the full details of that.
For official minutes, you would, you do have to say that?
So you're saying a draft minute, you're not going to put in a draft minutes?
I'm saying they don't have to read the, the draft minutes at a meeting, that they can simply say, this is what we worked on in our meeting, and then the, once the minutes are done and approved, and they're accepted and filed, or, or whatever. I mean, you, you want to be transparent as far as what you're working on, but I don't think you have to be that precise in the council.
Well, I guarantee you don't, because nobody else is doing it. No, no, I have been looking and looking, and there is no other city in the state of Ohio that's reading draft committee minutes at their regular council meeting. And what it does is, it makes the meeting go twice as long as it should. The media doesn't even show up anymore.
Mr., Mr. President.
Because they're tired of hearing it.
I have a question, but I'd like to direct it to Vicki. Is that okay?
Yes.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, because I, I, I'm trying to understand it. They're just wanting to keep the committee minutes out of the regular council meeting, the draft committee minutes. It, it's okay to s, say like, two or three lines about what that committee's doing in a regular council meeting, and it be on record, though, is that? Like, when they ask.
That's, that's what every other city's doing.
Wouldn't that be a question directed at Ron?
Well, if you have a committee, okay, at a council meeting, you have, we'll say, finance committee, gets a little blurb of what they did in a previous meeting. That blurb.
Then becomes part of.
Part of the council meeting minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, but they could just say, we're, we're discussing a water line on Stetson Road. And then if the public sees that in there, and they say, huh, I want to know more about this water line on Stetson Road, maybe I'll further look into what the service committee minutes have been discussing. Then they'll go to the website, they'll click on the service committee, and they'll be like, oh, here's the whole two pages where they talked about that. There's no reason that needs to be duplicated in both places.
I have no problem with that.
I mean, I mean, we've seen people walk out of here because, you know, and Mr. Potter, he was running for council there, and he came to one meeting, and about halfway through the committee reports, he walked out.
I think that's pretty low, because he's got young children that were just born, so there could have been issues.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying anything bad about, I'm just saying, if the meeting wouldn't have had those committee things, he would have been able to see our whole meeting.
Nice to pick him, though, of all the people that walked out of our meetings.
There's been so many people walk out of here.
Oh, I know, well, I mean, like, look at it now, we're forty minutes in, and we haven't made it past communications and petitions. I mean, this is kind of ridiculous. Sorry to say it, but it is.
Mr. Stone.
Chuck Stone, fifteen oh-three. I think some of these questions that we're addressing to Vicki, we should be addressing to Rob, because he's the one that's, the attorney that knows the law. Now, Vicki's been around it for thirty-nine years, but I would think, I'm sorry.
Rob and me have talked multiple times, I went down to his office, and we've talked about how we should be doing our minutes.
I understand that. And, but I was just saying, instead of addressing Vicki with these questions, shouldn't they be addressed to Rob? Because he's got, he, he's got, he's got the thing on the wall that says he knows his stuff. Now, Vicki's been doing it for thirty-nine years, for an attorney. And she always had to have her stuff pretty much rubber stamped by an attorney, by the law director.
Is there any requirement, Rob, that the committee minutes be put into paper form in the permanent record of the regular meeting?
No, but, but Vicki and Lisa were discussing, that, when you make that committee report, and it can be one or two sentences, or it can be a three-hour presentation with PowerPoints and dancing bears, whatever it is, that synopsis then becomes part of your permanent record here, and carries over in all these committee meetings and everything. So you're going to have it, you're going to have that report here, and that report's not going to be limited to just, you know, your draft minutes of the other meeting. That report can have context. If health and safety was having, if there was legislation on the agenda today for EMS, and health and safety was making their committee reports, would it be more illustrative for the viewer to know what was in the draft minutes from the last meeting? Or would it be more illustrative to have Kevin make a two or three-minute presentation that goes, back in two thousand and five, we started talking about EMS, and through these conversations, we've gotten to two thousand and twenty-one, and this is where we're at, and this is what, what, what things are. So tho, those are competing interests. You know, when we read the draft minutes, we reading draft minutes, we're, we're taking a, a picture, a snapshot of that one prior meeting, and that is all. If we're giving a committee report, that committee report can present context and be broader when needed, or narrower, narrower when needed. And that, that's fine. But, a, as Vicki pointed out, that synopsis then becomes part of your minutes. Your minutes may end up being a little bit longer on occasion from your actual council meeting, because you may have a big presentation, an EMS-type thing, every year at the budget, or, uh, with union contracts through finance, uh, you're going to get those. Some, some are going to be very, very long, and some are going to be very, very short, we need to appropriate five hundred dollars for something, so.
I've got on a lot of other cities' meetings and websites. And looked and watched their regular meetings, how are they handling this to come up with this conclusion? Some of them, a lot of them, they have a committee report, and you know what the committee chair says? Nothing new to report at this time.
I will say that. The media has even commented how much longer our meetings are, other than, like, that they cover Crestline, Galleon, that ours are.
And that's after we've started going.
I mean, maybe we, hey, maybe we could get more people to run for council if the meetings weren't so long. You know, maybe we're holding ourselves back.
Yeah, we made the rule changes to shorten up the meetings at the beginning of the term, but unfortunately, they're still going longer, so makes sense that one.
Well, when, when we made them changes, everybody started giving like a little synopsis on the committee reports, and then they slowly all started going back to reading the whole draft minute thing all over again. I noticed that.
I could be wrong, but I feel that the comments of the meetings are lasting longer. They're now like, you know, an hour and a half, or whatever. That they're directed to me.
No.
No, ma'am, not at all.
No.
Um, because, let's face it, the meetings are longer. And why have they been longer? Because I've been coming up here and pointing out errors in minutes. The Ohio Sunshine Law says, the Ohio Supreme Court has held that minutes are inadequate when they contain inaccuracies that are not corrected. I'm just here to try and maybe save your butt.
Can I say something? Here's how I think it is. I feel like we mess up more if we don't keep those minutes to the committees. When we enter them into the regular meeting, then we've messed up those me, minutes. Does that make sense? Like, we've compounded the mistakes if they're not kept separate.
Well, like I said earlier, I have no problem if they're not read at the council meeting.
Well, good, because I'm making a decision right now, that's what we're doing. Unless council wants to legislate it.
Can we move on now?
Excuse me.
May I conduct our meeting?
Yep, we're still on public participation.
Bill Stoker, two zero five North Spring Street. I think Mr. Ratliff made it clear that committee chairman can present whatever he wants to during his comment, period. And it doesn't matter if it's the minutes from the previous meeting, or what, or however long it takes, however long his presentation takes, he can do it. Is that not correct?
Yes, the, there, this, the session in our report, or in our agenda, allows the committee chair to give a report. It can be whatever report he wants to give. So I think that nullifies, uh, uh, the council president's decision to limit it right there.
Well, it doesn't say in the agenda, it doesn't say draft minutes. So if they start reading draft minutes, I have to continue to let them read them?
Yep.
If it's in the committee chairman's report, yes.
Well, if that keeps happening, I don't know how much longer I may stick around.
Would the committee report and the draft minutes be two separate things? Why can't be two things?
They, they can be, and typically, they should be.
So our finance guy here, he says, we're discussing this, this, and this. That does not have anything to do with minutes.
Correct.
Or he can read the draft minutes as, as we're.
Or he can read the draft minutes as soon as we're.
Or if he wants to, he can read the draft minutes, so be it. Let's move on.
Thank you.
Is there any other public participation? Moving on, communications and petitions, we have one letter from the tax incentive review dated five twenty-one. Which I think we may need to refer to finance committee.
Correct. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's referred to the finance committee. Um, okay, we have no other communications and petitions. Standing committee reports. Public lands and building committee, Ms. Sheridan, do you have a report?
I do not have a report at this time, because I don't have any of this information.
Does anybody have questions for public lands and buildings?
Just point of order, it should be for the June seventeenth, not June third meetings.
Was there a June seventeenth meeting?
Yeah, that was the one you and I were not present for.
Yeah, but, that's what I'm saying, that, those didn't even happen. We didn't get our committees at that point in time. There were no committee meetings that week. There was just the regular meeting.
I got you.
So now the June thirteenth, the correct.
Well, this, this report doesn't have to be pertaining to what happened at the last committee meeting. You could talk about anything you want related to your committee right now. This is report time. So you don't have anything?
I don't have a report. Do you have a question for the mayor? Have we heard anything from the, um, train people?
Uh, no, not yet.
I noticed that they sort of fixed Whitestone. It was not done well, but at least it's not bottoming out cars.
So which way were you talking about that?
Well, that one was just fixing Whitestone Avenue, but that, uh, stuff that they were talking about for Oakwood.
Yeah, that's back in their hands right now. They're, they're working on that right now, but we haven't, uh, because they were able to purchase the property yet. We'll follow up with them this week.
Okay, we're going to move on to health and safety. Mr. Myers? Does anybody have any questions for health and safety committee? Moving on, service committee, Mr. Trucker, do you have anything to report?
Uh, no report.
Does anybody have any questions for service committee? Uh, moving on, finance committee, Mr. McKeever?
Nothing to report.
Does anybody have any questions for finance committee? Moving on, economic development, Mr. Foote?
Nothing.
Does anybody have any questions for economic development? Okay, that is the end of the committee reports. Need a motion to accept the committee reports collectively.
Some. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
What?
Aye.
We accepted that there were no reports.
All opposed, all opposed. Uh, reports are accepted. Report of city officers, Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Oh, yes, this is a short one. I just wanted to thank everybody, uh, for taking part in the big bicentennial weekend. And, uh, by all accounts, it was a huge success. Kelly Patterson, Amy Fisher, the co-chairs of the, of the committee. Uh, they will, uh, they did a fine job, but they'll tell you that, uh, you know, there was lots of volunteers, including their committee, uh, committee members too. And, uh, we had so many, so many good comments about it, uh, beginning with the Art Park dedication on Friday. Uh, then, you know, some of you were at the, uh, opening of the Time Capsule yesterday. It was lots of fun. And, uh, many, many good events. Uh, the concerts were exceptional. Lots, it's surprising how much musical talent is in this, uh, in this city, including Mr. Kevin Myers, writing drummer extraordinaire. Yeah. What a great band that you guys have. It's unbelievable. So, the United Harmony was fantastic too, as were Rolling Hams, and it was just, it was just a good day. The fireworks, uh, Doug, you probably have had a lot of good comments on it. They were.
I actually have had a lot of good feedback. I'm very happy about that.
They were outstanding. Uh, it just, everything was wonderful and, yeah. Thanks to you and Kiwanis for, for doing that too.
Honestly, if I could interrupt real quick here, uh, the thanks to the Kiwanis and the Bicentennial Commission for being able to, uh, help out with the funding this year, but, uh, the biggest thanks should go to all of our local businesses who year in and year out donate to make sure that our city has a wonderful fireworks show. Um, there's a list that's too large to mention, but if you ever walk into a local business in our community, whether it be small, big, if it's your employer even, you might want to thank your employer because there are very large reasons why our city has fireworks show every year, and I want to make sure that they get commended for that, because without them, we wouldn't have it, so.
Doug, can I ask you a question there? How, how much typically does a fireworks cost to put on?
Uh, we, uh, normally raise between ten and eleven thousand, depending on crisis for the year. Um, because of the Bicentennial Commission's help, um, we were actually able to raise twenty thousand dollars this year for the show.
That's fantastic.
That's why it was as, as big as it was. Um, the guys that actually shot the fireworks off were, um, asking me, they're like, "You've got a lot of fireworks here for a town this size. This should be a really good show." And I said, "Well, that's what we were hoping for," so.
Well, what was really cool about the location is there were so many great venues to see the fireworks.
One of the coolest things that I thought was, um, it seemed like a lot of people were able to cook out and enjoy one another's company. Um, actually, in the Home City Ice parking lot, they were tailgating over there and cooking out and grilling, and the whole night, most had tents set up.
Tailgate, huh? A new tradition.
Yeah, that, kind of. So, um, and at that same point, um, please, um, reach out to me on social media, contact the Kiwanis Club. Um, let anybody know what you felt about our location this year. Um, it's something that here, again, we do this for the community, so if you guys do want it to be moved to that location, it's something we can discuss and talk about in the future, so please reach out, let us know, um, give us your feedback. Thank you.
Doug, um, if they want to donate to the fireworks, how would they be able to do that?
Uh, if you want to donate, you can reach out to the Kiwanis Club. Um, uh, donations could be sent, actually, um, just care of Kiwanis fireworks to actually my office, uh, five eighty South Sandusky Avenue at Watts House of Insurance. Um, and then, uh, if, uh, you, uh, send in your donation, we do do every year, we do do our flyer that we, uh, put out, everybody that donates every year, so.
Great, great.
It's one way that we try and let everybody know.
Thanks again. I, I, one of the, uh, ways that I, I knew it was so good is, uh, from my house, we had a great view. But after it was finished, the finale, you could hear applause in the whole north end, all the way coming down from Lane Street, and it was, it was really cool to hear that.
For me, the most enjoyable part, because I had to be there, um, actually where they shot them off, was seeing everybody's photos around town because the goal was, is to make them visible from downtown. And I, uh, saw somebody actually finish the concert at Shine's Art Park and video the fireworks over the Prudential Building right there from the park, so.
Oh, good deal.
Doug, I've seen them fireworks from Ranch Wood Drive.
Okay, I, some people said nineteen and a hundred, Whitestone.
You can see them through the woods.
Awesome. Well, on the back patio at Old Thirty Barbecue, they had a get-together, and you could see them from the back patio.
We could hear them out there too. Yeah, it's wonderful. And the Art Park would, just, uh, the dedication was awesome. Had rave reviews for the Art Park too, so. Uh, there's more events planned for twenty twenty-one. Uh, check out the, uh, Bicentennial website, which is busyrus2021.com. And that's all for tonight.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? No questions, then. Moving on to the service director's report.
Yeah, we got Jeff's report, uh, and, uh, pool season is going very well. Got a, uh, brand-new staff, pretty much. Uh, a few days we've lost to weather. We've been very busy, though. Selling lots of, uh, pretzels and other concession items, and, uh, it's going really well so far. Thanks to the PD and the, uh, FOP. Tracy was here in attendance. Thank you for, you were, did a wonderful job on the car show. We had, Jeff said over six hundred cars. Is that, is that right?
Five hundred and thirty-six.
Five thirty-six, okay. Wow, so that's a lot of cars, and it was, uh, just a great time, and, uh, and, uh, thanks for picking it up after what happened last year, so. Uh, we're now taking over the billing for the county water and sewer line, and, uh, we're still waiting on the transfer of funds, uh, to the auditor, so she can have the funds appropriated by council. I think that should be coming any time. Uh, all electric accounts were transferred to us as of June twenty-fourth. Uh, we have a referral. We want to refer lateral hires for the PD, FD, and ASME, um, uh, to committee. And, uh,
Wow, could you?
Yeah, so that would be from, somebody from another department, uh, maybe in, in another city.
Another, okay.
Yeah, another city, yeah. Could transfer in, right, right. We've already, we already have an agreement with the fire department on it. Uh, we're working on the other two right now, so. Uh, we did get a, we had some good news. Uh, grant, another grant, actually, from the FAA for thirty-two thousand dollars to be used for, uh, airport expense, and, uh, we're working on having Kevin De Trey come here, uh, in the next couple of weeks. So, let you know on that. And also, the base project for the airport, which is a runway extension, will be one hundred percent funded. Isn't that incredible? That saves us, um, it's ten percent or five percent, so it's, would be, well, almost a hundred thousand dollars. So, that's really good. Uh, bid openings are coming, uh, very soon. That's, uh, Ju- Thursday, July fifteenth, that's next week, that's for Mill and Pave. Uh, one hour later, on three PM, will be the Stetser Road Waterline Project. Board of Control met Monday, twenty the sixth, at ten AM to award the Edgewood, uh, project. RMH contract was awarded the bid. It was two hundred seventy thousand dollars, which was under budget. Um, we signed the contract with RMH, uh, last week on Thursday, and, uh, for that paving of Edgewood Drive, and they're going to start the, uh, last week of July or the first week of August, and hopes to have, uh, all completed by the end of September. There will be a public meeting on Wednesday, July twenty-first, at five thirty PM in city council chambers to discuss the project with any of the area residents that are interested in learning about it. Uh, the, um, we're still, we've, uh, met with, uh, the US EPA, um, a couple of weeks ago. We've been meeting for, you know, several months, actually, with, uh, Arcadis and, uh, a group of, uh, city workers and, um, McKeever and Associates. Uh, Laura's coming Thursday evening for the committee meeting, and I was hope, uh, she's coming from Cleveland, and if it would be possible to have her, uh, first, so she could get home. And she'll be, uh, many of, the ones that were on council before can remember when she came the last time. Bruce will remember that. And, uh, just, uh, talk about, uh, what we're planning to do for phase two with the EPA. We're wrapping up phase one here, uh, in the next year. And we have to get, uh, approval for phase two from the EPA and, and, uh, and then, of course, that has to go through city council approval also. Waterline project between the Village of Nevada and the city of Bucyrus is still moving forward. Uh, both entities have their to-do lists, as there are many moving parts on, on both sides. Uh, we had a meeting with, um, RCAP. Their representative Cindy Brooks, uh, to coordinate the project between the city and the village, moving forward. We, uh, hope everything goes smoothly and plan that for next year. Uh, there is a ODNR reservoir agreement that, uh, needs to be referred to committee also. It's, uh, a new, actually, it's, uh, the previous agreement expired, and, uh, uh, we just need to discuss that and bring it up in council Thursday. And we're, we have a couple of job openings. If you know anyone, uh, we're looking for general laborers. And, uh, we're going to accept applications through Friday, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. They can be picked up at, uh, mayor's safety service director's office. We're also hiring a utility maintenance person. And, uh, you have to, uh, the, uh, fee is, it's fifteen dollars to take the test, and then make sure you bring your, uh, current driver's license too. And that's the last of Jeff's report.
Is ODNR going to public services buildings?
Yeah, ODNR has to go to public services buildings, and I was double check, I wanted to double check on the, uh, lateral hires, it, it'll have to go to finance. It's, it's actually a civil service issue at this point, but.
Excuse me, I have a question. If someone works in another city and they want to work here, and they're interested in, say, a utility maintenance position or whatever, but they already work for the city of Mansfield.
Mm-hmm.
Is, are they able to do that online, or do they need to go to the city service directors? Because that would be like a transfer, I would think.
Yeah, well, as of right now, we don't have the agreements in place, but, yeah, they would, uh, they would still have to fill out an application, and we, then, but they wouldn't, there wouldn't be a test. They wouldn't have to take a. Uh, as of right now, um, we don't have any, everything in place on that, so as soon, as soon as we get the, the details worked out and get it approved by city council.
If they've already taken that exam to work for them?
They won't have to take the test again.
They don't have to.
Yeah. And they would be brought in at, at their level of experience then.
Okay.
Anybody right now can, if, if they want to come in and take the test to start it at the bottom of the scale, can do that. And this is, you know, just to be able to, you know, attract talent and, uh, bring them in at their own level, that they're at right now.
Ms. Mayor, I, I, I think what Ms. Alseb was asking, though, is right now, would they, if somebody wanted to transfer from one city to, to Bucyrus right now, as of today, they would have to, they would have to take the civil service test and go through the process.
Okay.
The, the goal of this, and we're working with the unions and civil service, is to make that so it doesn't have to happen. But somebody right now, today, would have to go through that whole process.
So he needs to contact the city service director's office for an application then?
Yeah.
That's not available online?
Better wait until we get this lateral thing moved through.
We have, yeah, right.
Right.
We need a motion to refer lateral hires to the finance committee?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Also need a motion to refer ODNR reservoir agreement to public lands and buildings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Is that it? Does anybody have any cer- questions for service director's report? Kevin?
Not to sound pessimistic or anything, because I, the car show from right here was a great success, but there's one issue that came up that I just want to make sure we get out for, so you guys can talk about and figure out, and as well for your office. Uh, there's a young lady that lives in the three hundred block of, uh, South Sandusky, in an apartment upstairs that had her car towed. She said she had no knowledge, there was no, and I don't know if we've got a way we can put signs up next year, or something better to, to let her. She had to pay over a hundred and twenty dollars. She was in Mansfield for the, the morning she left, didn't know anything about it, and here, here's a young person, we're trying to attract people to live here in town, and she's got to shell out a hundred and twenty-some dollars because her car got towed.
I think that was, because we brought that up, I think you read the letter, the city council.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we sent some letters out to the council.
Yeah.
We replied to that, we had issues with some construction problems down there.
Yeah.
So we tried to take care of it.
Yeah, I talked, uh, to Walker, and he mentioned that he went and talked to people, and I didn't ask him for a list of who all he talked to. Apparently, he missed that. Yeah, they claim they weren't spoken to, but I just think maybe we can come up with a, a better way to make sure everybody's aware, so we don't put somebody in that situation again, so. I just want to make sure we can open that dialogue.
Did you drop one of them letters off at every business down?
We drop all its businesses, we drop them off anywhere that's different.
I don't know, maybe, the only other thing I can think of is to put one under each windshield wiper on the car parked out there.
Put a sign on each block.
We did. That was what went to the public lands and building, the ODNR reservoir agreement. Does anybody else have any questions for service director? Bruce?
Thank you, mayor.
Uh, Mike, microphone.
Um, do you want, uh, the thirty-two thousand dollars referred, uh, that we'll be receiving from the FAA to any, any, uh, particular committee to be able to talk about that thirty-two thousand?
I, I don't think we need to right now. We'll, let's, yeah, let's, all right, yeah, let's wait till we get Kevin here, and we'll get that plan, then we'll talk about that.
It's actually on my referral list.
It's on Joyce's referral list.
Okay, does any other questions for service director's report? Moving on, Mr. Ratliff, do you have a report?
Thank you, just briefly, if you. Thank you. If you drive down West Mansfield Street, you'll notice that Rivers Edge Mobile Home Park, uh, doesn't exist anymore. Uh, there's a pile, a little bit, a small pile of stuff getting hauled away, and then there's the buildings up at the street level. More to come on those, but right now, the trailers are all gone, so.
I think he deserves a hand for this.
The, uh, the movie, the, uh, near, the, uh, Fourth of July movie presented by the Bicentennial Commission, uh, the first movie, movie ever shown at Shine's Art Park was not horrible. So all those that stayed and, uh, braved the, the weather, it was actually an okay movie. Coming up, July sixteenth, the Santa Claus, which is sponsored by Mr. Frank Hauser and Wavelength. And July thirtieth is the re-showing, is replay, because we got rained out for a night at the museum with, uh, from the. And July thirtieth is the re-showing, is replay, because we got rained out for Night at the Museum with, from the Friends of Bucyrus Public Library. Definitely keep both those on your calendar and Bucyrus Public Library, Friends of Bucyrus Public Library indicates that the July thirtieth movie will be interactive, it will be people in costumes and fun stuff, so. Be there, be.
Does anybody have questions for the law director?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I was just curious, that little service garage that's right before you cross the bridge, is that part of that trailer park as well?
It's on the. Yeah, there's like two, yeah, tho, those were owned by that and those are under condemnation as well. We expect those will be gone.
Does the city own this property now?
No.
They're not donating it to us or nothing?
No, they tore it down. They tore it down on their own initiative.
Did you have a question, James?
I seen Dudley Street was listed on Zillow.
Yes, yeah, taxis.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what happens.
Hundred and four thousand. How much? A hundred and four thousand.
Yeah.
Wow. I hope I include some carts, it's sad.
Oh, microphone, James' microphone.
Comes, comes with smells. We, we have, yeah, we, I, I don't wanna get too far ahead. We, we had that and a couple others. We have limited budget for tearing down houses, obviously, as you know, we can get probably two or three done a year. That was one of the prime candidates, as are a couple others. We were contacted, we, I was contacted about two weeks ago from a company out of Columbus. Under the Ohio Revised Code, there's a provision, there's a nuisance code provision that allows you, allows a city or even a neighbor to sue in common police court to declare a property a public nuisance. It's fairly straightforward to do that, the problem is, when you do that, you, the court or the city has to either accept responsibility for demolishing or repairing the house. The court can appoint a receiver in lieu of the city doing it, but then the receiver has to take access to that property and either repair it or tear it down. The company in Columbus, that's what they do, they act as a receiver. And they're willing to take the assignments from courts on properties like Dudley or like, I think it's ten, twenty, whatever, the property on South Sandusky eight-hundred or ten-hundred block that are no findable owners. Taxis gets involved, that sort of thing. And they're willing to accept that appointment as receiver from a common police court, go in, rehabilitate the house at their cost, and then they're authorized by the court as receiver to then liquidate that property and recover their expenses. So, they can take the house, they can fix it up, which is what we want, we don't want these houses torn down. And then they sell them and then if they make any profit, it's on them. So, it saves us from having to tear it down, saves us from losing another house in the city. They're getting information to me, I sent them information on some of the houses that we would have in the pipeline. And once we have some better details on that, I plan on bringing them to council, so you guys know what we're doing.
Please, you got.
I understand the definition of nuisance, but can't we deem these properties a nuisance prior to the fact that they're just ready to, like, walk up and push over? I mean.
We, we can, we can condemn a property at any, any point in time that we, that the property maintenance officer feels that it has dilapidated more than fifty percent of its, of its original value. The issue we, that we have when we do that is if there is not an identifiable owner, someone to go say, if you don't demolish this property, you're gonna go to jail, then it's on us to do it. And we have a very limited budget to do that.
But I'm saying, can't we do that prior to them having to be condemned? I mean, when these properties still have some kind of fixable value, is there no way for the CIC to get a hold of them so that they can be rehabbed and?
No.
No.
Is, is, is the short answer.
You know, yeah.
Yeah, is, is the short answer. Part of the.
Because across the street from that Dudley property is another property that I wanted for years.
Yeah.
And that woman has now passed and I've watched the grass grow up, pass the windows, and now I'm seeing the neighbors are starting to put stuff in the driveway. And it makes me sad, because that's gonna be another property that.
We'll tear it down.
I mean, yeah.
And one of the things that I think has been referred to committee and we've talked about it in the past is getting away from criminal enforcement of the code and going to a civil enforcement of the code. And that's what some, some other cities have done and, and have had great success with it. I met with the law director at Cincinnati, actually, and talked to them about their program. And what it allows, the, the city can't foreclose on a property for back taxes, no matter how big the assessments go. So, it's, it's a hundred percent up to the county prosecutor to do that. So, sometime, and, and they're busy and there's a lot of them, and so sometimes they languish for years and years and by the time they get to that point, either taxis jumps in and lists it for sale on Zillow and we still can't do anything, or it's just so gone that nothing can be done with it.
Did taxis remodel the house on Zillow?
No.
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 They, they just buy them and get involved and then you can't track any down.
You literally can't smell it when you're walking in front of it.
Yeah, I, I, it's, there's another one that they just contacted me about today, a different division and this part of it's based out of South Carolina, so that's a Hopley Street address. Anyways, the, the civil penalty mechanism, when, when you can't find an owner or the owner's in a nursing home or something like that.
Or they're passed.
Yeah, or when you, it's a corporation in Puerto Rico or Dallas or South Carolina or whatever, you can't get to them. Then the civil fines allow you to then seek judgment against the property based on they owe civil fines and then go back to court and seek to have a lien enforced against the property based on the fines that weren't paid and the judgment and attach the house that way. A lot of cities have started doing it that way, finding that the cities are more responsive to that foreclosure process than the counties are. It's just simply, the counties have so many of these and then they're fighting with banks and then taxis gets involved and things of that nature. And so, when, when it's a civil fine, the cities, a little more nimble and, and able to do it. And so, that, that's what's in your package, that's for you guys to review and, or I think it's in health and safety.
We, we've talked about it, we beat on that bush for.
Oh, yeah.
Almost four years now, since I've been here at least.
Right, yeah, but anyways, that's. Blicky, yeah, that's one that's gonna be on our tear down list, that basement's collapsed on it. So, that, that one's definitely gonna have to be one that's torn down, that's gonna eat up a little bit of our budget. And the other two after that are probably Dudley. There's two on Hopley, I'm not sure where those are gonna go, and then there's one on South Sandusky. Those are probably the next leading candidates after the Blicky Street one.
Questions for law director, Mr. Keever?
Yes, the house on the north side of West Mansfield, west of Spring Street, reset fire.
Oh, the one that burned down?
It's owned by the same owner, the one at the corner that got.
That burned down, right. No, I've talked to his attorney, they are simply waiting on the insurance proceeds. I advised her that the house had not yet been boarded up and was still open to the public. And it was, I had very short, I had a very short fuse on that remaining that way. And that was on Thursday of last week, so I haven't been back by it to see if.
It's still open.
Still wide open. Yes, yeah. So, I'll follow back up with her and.
Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
I wanna make a referral that relates to the law director, but it'd be to public lands and buildings. The land bank has some paperwork for accepting some properties that we've previously discussed. I'd like to refer to public lands and I'll get all that information forwarded to you for, for Thursday night.
Are you thinking about the city purchasing from the land bank?
No, it's stuff that's already been, it's, when, when the land bank tears down a house, it has to remain in the land bank's name for three years. And so, that, that time has passed on some of the properties, so we just have to get deed transfers done.
So, it could get transferred to the city?
Yes.
And then what would we do with them?
Moll.
Well, that's, that's part of what we'll discuss.
Okay, who wants to make a motion and say?
Make a motion, you can do second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so that says going to public lands and buildings?
Yep.
Any other questions for the law director? Auditor, Ms. Schiffer?
Thank you, Mr. President. You have the statement cash position for June thirtieth to look over. You also have the income tax revenue comparisons and the revenue tallies to budget. So, you can look those over and if you have any questions, you can get with me about that. I have quite a few referrals this evening, all to finance. We need to appropriate from unappropriated general funds donations that were received by the police department for Safety Town and the K-9 program. We also need to appropriate from unappropriated street construction maintenance and repair funds and additional five-hundred thousand for the twenty-twenty-one Mill and Pave street projects. We actually, I think, had added a few things since budget time. And that, I think that was a part of what Jeff Dunn and Lynn McKeever went over on projects they wanted to get done. So, this is for the actual bidding and entering into the contract for the Mill and Pave. And it's all, that has already been approved, we, we didn't have as much in that appropriation as what council actually approved for the project, so that's why I'm coming to you now to add this.
So, we're not doing additional, we're just making up for a shortfall and not upgrading enough?
Correct. Also, we need to appropriate from unappropriated waterworks funds, monies received from Crawford County for maintenance costs of the county water lines. And we will hopefully have those funds in our coffers by Friday. We need to appropriate from unappropriated county sewer funds. You'll recall, we created a new fund earlier this year. I've got numbers now that we can actually appropriate that money in this new fund for maintenance of the county sewer plants that we are maintaining. And I have another referral, and this is for, to appropriate from unappropriated airport coronavirus response grant funds and additional thirty-two thousand dollars for airport expenses. We had already appropriated to this fund twelve thousand that we found out about earlier this year and it's just come to my attention, we're getting another thirty-two thousand to help with airport expenses.
Did you say coronavirus?
Yeah, it is, it's part of the new recovery that was passed this year, but it still has to do with coronavirus.
Did the mayor just say that was all funded one hundred percent?
Microphone.
No, that was, what he said was funded a hundred percent was our actual airport project for the runway extension.
Okay. So, what's this money gonna be used for?
This money will be used for the airport manager fees, utilities and any other. I have not seen the, the grant language yet, but anything, any equipment or whatever we need at the airport, it could probably be used for that, so.
And this is coming out of CARES COVID money?
No.
It's the grant that we just got because it's.
But it's designated for the airport directly?
Yes, that is correct. We had, we had to do, you know, a separate fund for it, because it's federal money just for this. FAA.
All right, don't feel bad, I say FFA all the time. We're from a rural community, it's, it's, it's nothing.
Right.
Do these need to be all separate or can we make these all one motion?
You could make it all one motion, I'll have the breakdown for all of this on Thursday.
I need a motion for the various referrals to finance.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Does anybody have any questions for the auditor?
Yeah, I got one. Under the treasurer's report, if you could answer this.
Okay.
Under the coronavirus relief fund, a hundred and four thousand, forty-four dollars in there. I don't ever remember seeing that before, is that?
All right, let me find it here.
I'm sorry, it's about.
It's about two thirty.
And I, and I.
Oh, okay.
That knocked your little name out.
I'm sorry. Okay, on the, this is from May, but on the cash position, we did have those, those funds still sitting there. That doesn't mean that they're not encumbered, there's probably purchase orders out against that. We didn't have any outstanding checks against it, so it just crosses over to actually her balance. That first column is the balance that I show on the books and then that last col, the treasurer's balance is actually bank balances. So.
So, that's.
That's, that's been there, probably just varying numbers each month.
So, there's bills against that?
Yes, yes, there is. I do have one other item I wanted to let you know. Yeah, that does. Your cash position should show a little, little more as far as revenues and expenses year to date. Our audit has been completed, audit opinion issued. I don't have the hard copy of the annual report yet, I should have that soon to send off to the printer. I'll have copies of all their draft audit reports to give you on Thursday. And then we'll need to discuss whether we want to have a post-audit teleconference so that they can go over things with you. We didn't, we waived that last year, but I know there's been some questions on some things and maybe we could do a Zoom meeting, but we need to determine when we may be available and when the auditor's actually available, so.
When a state auditor's available or who?
This is our audit firm that did the audit. They're contracted through the state auditor's office.
They're usually the ones sitting in here just looking like they're working all the time.
So, when would we likely be possibly meeting with them?
I don't know, we'll have to determine that, but we'll want to have.
Right now.
It won't be immediately, no, no, because we'll have to schedule a time with them. I'd like everybody to have copies of our annual report in front of them when we actually do it and I don't have that to get to the printer yet, I should have that this week, so.
Do you have the PDF version of it?
Uh, yeah, I do.
Could you email it to us?
Probably.
And I'll put it on the website?
You can't put it on the website yet, it's not official until the state auditor's, this is a draft. State auditor has to release the audit before it's public.
You always score good anyways, you always.
That'll take some of her points away.
Okay, any last questions for the auditor? We need a motion to accept and file the June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one treasurer's report that was distributed. Oh, wait a minute. It was distributed on June fifteenth, but it was dated as May, the motion accepted filed.
So, second. Yep.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All through, they're all opposed. Okay, no police chief, there is a letter here from the fire chief. I'm going to let the council clerk read that letter.
Dear council members, in an effort to attract highly qualified candidates for employment with the City of Bucyrus Fire Department, the City of Bucyrus and IAFF Local eleven-twenty have signed a memorandum of understanding, MOU, regarding lateral transfers as an acceptable hiring practice within the Bucyrus Fire Department. I formally request the City of Bucyrus Council consider legislation that directs the Civil Service Commission to adopt rules that allow lateral transfers with the following conditions. The appointing authority shall have the authority to determine that competitive, determine that competitive written examinations for lateral entry for the position of firefighter may be, may be dispensed with and instead may insist on completion of an application, submission of proof of previous full-time employment as a firefighter, proof of experience and training, an oral interview, and such other matters as the appointing authority may determine are appropriate. Respectfully, Chad Schwimley, Fire Chief.
That just goes in line with what the service director already requested that we refer to.
Will we do accept and file it?
We will when we get. To the very next thing here. Can you motion accept all city officers' reports?
Second.
I was expecting you to be fast, Mark.
All opposed. Visitor's input regarding standing and special committee. Visitor's input regarding standing in special committees and of city officers, is there any visitor's input on any of those reports? Okay, we're going to move on. Does anybody need recess? Um, consideration of proposed legislation for the second time. You can read that top part again.
Ordinance number 21 dash 2021, amending and supplementing section 1157.02 entitled Official Zoning District Map under chapter 1157 entitled Zoning Districts and Zoning District Map, under title nine entitled Zoning Districts, under part 11 entitled Planning and Zoning Code of the codified ordinances of the City of Bucyrus by the redesignation of the properties located at 416, 416 and a half South Sandusky Avenue for parcel number 080015839000 from the Neighborhood Business District into the Downtown Business District, and from 116 East Center Street for parcel number 080015004000 from Urban Neighborhood Residential District into the Neighborhood Business District.
Need a, uh, yeah, need a motion to accept that as a second reading?
Some move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for a second time. Do we have any public comment? There is none. Does anybody have any old business?
Oh, did you see that on there?
Well, I don't know how wide it ain't on there.
While we were in this meeting, Jerry Glou reached out, and she could not find, uh, minutes, or the packet, I'm sorry, the packet to follow, and there was no notice turned in to them.
Well, apparently the packet's on the website with the wrong date. Vicky pointed that out earlier.
Maybe that's it.
And he said we don't have to send them notice because it's a regular meeting.
Okay. I'm just saying.
And because of the holiday and her being out, there was no notice sent out, which there's no legal requirement for a regular meeting notice anyway.
Okay.
So any other old business? Does anybody have any new business? No new business. Nobody's absent that needs excused. What do we have for all the new referrals?
We have the various appropriations going to finance, the tax incentive paper going to finance, lateral transfers, finance the ODNR to public building and lands, and the land bank to public building and lands.
I just saw something.
Who's tax incentive going to?
Finance.
It's always been economic development. When I was the enterprise owner.
You are right, Vicky. It is listed under economic development, so we need to have a motion to refer that to economic development.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As far as the committee meetings Thursday, Aaron, did public lands and buildings have anything for the parking lots, the city-owned parking lots? Because we never discussed that last month. It was Lynn, Lynn McKeever was.
Information, you were going to see what meeting that was in because I was out of town.
We, it, we never had it.
So.
Well, what, hey, catch, catch him from leaving here. Can we have Lynn, Lynn McKeever come in on Thursday, talk about the parking lots?
Not then. Um, who will be able to make it? We'll have, if they can't make it, we'll have a report. But they will make it, we'll have a report. I know they're working on it right now. I'm not sure they're quite ready.
Wait, they, they were supposed to be ready by the 17th of last month, and there's still not.
Microphone, microphone.
I can vouch for that. Lynn was not able to. He was out of commission for at least three weeks.
But I heard he was out measuring, so.
Yeah, they're out, they're out.
Some of the guys were out measuring.
They're out measuring now, so they're working on it.
Is it something that we could address, Jeff Wagner? Questions we could just ask?
Well, they were supposed to have engineering cost estimates for the parking lots.
Have everything figured out that we talked about being.
We're just waiting for the engineering costs right now.
So that's not that 500,000 that we have to okay?
No.
No, that's street fund money. We wouldn't be able to use that for parking lots anyway.
So why can't we sell those?
Because they're used by multiple businesses.
Why can't we sell them? So the coin business up here, somebody owns the coin business building, somebody owns the front half of that parking lot, somebody owns the back half of that parking lot, and somebody else owns the cigar shop next door. If you're looking for a comparison, why can't we sell it? Sell the parking lot that's there. At least put them CIC and put them up for bids, see if anybody wants them. Then we can get some revenue off of them. Instead of costing us money all the time, we get a little bit, not a lot.
Well, we can discuss that at the public lands and buildings.
Is that a referral?
That's a referral.
It's already been in the committee. It's already in there.
Mark's trying to sell things like three years.
Well, he's got me on board. Just stating for the minutes, uh, anybody leaving any of the meetings has to request, prior to the meeting ending, permission from the chair to leave the meeting. It's in our rules. We have. Well, any committee or reg, any meetings, any meetings, whoever's presiding, officer.
So if I'm not on that committee and the committee's, I'm, and I'm done, that means I can't leave?
No. You have to, it says in our rules, you have to request permission from whoever's chairing that meeting.
So if I'm chairing it as economic development, I end and say I'm leaving, and I guess I gave myself the authority?
I'm talking about the mayor just leaving there before the meeting.
Exactly who you're attacking right this second.
I just, I just wanted to.
If you're not on a committee, you don't have to be here.
I just wanted to.
If something would come up and I wasn't on that committee.
You have no requirement to be here.
Because I always stay for all of them, but.
We need to just.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we're adjourned at 8:38 PM.